Yeah, okay. All right. Good evening. So my name is Adam Parks. My wife and I own Victorian Farmstead, the company down inside community market. And I am your host and moderator for tonight's city council candidates forum. As I said before, I'm not debate. The purpose of tonight's event has been for the community about how these candidates view businesses' role in the future of Sebastopol. The questions tonight are specifically related to issues facing our small businesses. If you want to know more about where they stand on other issues, there was a forum put on by the League of Women Voters, September 22nd. If you go to LWV Sonoma County on YouTube, you'll find that forum and you can watch it there and they talk about many issues that we're not going to cover tonight. Adam kind of did this, but I'm going to reiterate, some people walked in, there's some people in the crowd that I'd like to recognize. Diana Rich and Mesa Hinton, our Vice Mayor and City Council people that are currently on the board are here. Patrick Nagel is the incumbent candidate running for the Annalee School Board. And Mariah Bull, of course, Mariah. There you are, is our new Executive Director for the Chamber in town here. So thank you all for coming, great to have you guys here. Also, would the SDA board members stand up real quick? So these four, if you have questions about the SDA, want to get involved, want to join a committee, want to learn when the next meeting is, want to get on the information sheet, grab any one of the four of them after the meeting and they'll be happy to get you the information you need. Thanks. How many business owners are there? Raise your hands. There you go. Okay, the structure tonight is simple. I know this because I made it up myself at about five o'clock tonight. Each candidate will be given 60 seconds for an introductory statement that should focus on your background qualifications. We'll get to know their views on policy and their platforms through how they answer the questions during the evening. Then I, we, as a committee, we came up with five questions that I have for you. You'll get 90 seconds to answer each question. That annoying ringtone that you heard a few minutes ago is how you'll know when your time is up. Michael in the far back there has a 30-second sheet that he will hold up for you that lets you know you have 30 seconds left before the annoying sound goes off. There won't be any questions from the audience as far as raise your hand and ask a question. If you have something you're interested in knowing the answer to that revolves around business in Sebastopol, drop a note to Michael before the end of this and we'll do a quick consolidation and see if there's time to answer a few questions from the audience. Hopefully, some, many of you have the same question, we can do it that way. Hopefully, the questions we formulated are pretty broad and we'll get to those. And if your question doesn't get answered or you have more questions, if, if there's time permitting afterwards, I'm sure these folks would love to stick around and talk to the people who are going to be voting for them, so feel free to approach them afterwards. Also, they all have websites that you can get more information and find out how to reach them there. Any questions before I introduce the candidates?
Just, so the, if there are any questions, should we send a paper around or how does that get to work?
Yes, chicken scratch, whatever piece of paper you got would be great. I've got some paper here if you need it.
Yeah, it'd be great if it's fine.
We'll send something around.
Yeah. Yeah. Also, small group, small room, if you want to chit chat or ask a question or whatever, if you just step through the door so that everybody can hear what's going on, that would be awesome. Okay, let's meet the candidates. Incidentally, there was a very scientific process that we went through to draw names, so I selected a very specific order. My warehouse manager picked you out of my hat. Sandra Bauer, raise your hand. Stephen Zolman, Oliver Dick, Phil McLouis, and Dennis Coulters. Those are your five candidates for three spots on the city council. Okay, so Sandra, if you want to get started with your introductory 60 seconds and your time starts now.
Okay. Thank you to Sebastopol Downtown Association for hosting this forum tonight and also the Softnet. And my name is Sandra Bauer. I'm a 34-year resident of Sebastopol. I'm the Director of the GMA Safety Network and we advocate for reducing EMS to include lives and protect nature. I co-own a small business with my husband called Sierra Dawn Products and we sell a product called a camp, it's called camp so, camp studs and it's a camp and so. And from 1989 to 2007, I made and sold ceramic stones called light stones to New Age gift shops across the United States. Before that, I, an artist, I created whimsical ceramic figures and I sold those in multiple varieties. I do support local businesses. And historically, Sebastopol does support the businesses, landlaboration tradition. I have been a council watcher, engaged with the city council since 2007 and I was the California Public Utilities Commission Intermediator. Is that it?
Yeah.
Mike told me I had 90 seconds, so.
90 seconds for the quick, just, just a quick, just quick background and your, what do we say? Focus on background qualifications. All right. Stephen?
Yes, good evening. My name is Stephen Zolman. I'm the owner of a solo law firm here in town, specializes in representing domestic violence survivors and child custody issues. Have an MBA, a master's in health law, in addition to my JD. I, when I first moved here with my partner, definitely wanted to become a member of the Downtown Business Association, however, we lived a little bit outside of the area, so I'm really hoping that we'll be able to expand so that we can be a part of this. As a result, I served on the Board of Directors of our Chamber of Commerce here for a number of years. So at least as of 2020, before COVID, I was pretty aware of how much the businesses actually needed support and so that's what I'm prepared to, by my luck, so thank you.
Stephen and Oliver.
Good evening. I'm Oliver. I work from home here. We moved up here from San Francisco nine years ago. I split my time between working in large corporations and consulting with large corporations, but I haven't been doing very much of that during the COVID era. So two notable things I've done, I ran all the worldwide game development collaboration sites, only a PlayStation and CD management, so I was organizing people all over the world for that. When I moved up to Sebastopol, I was working for Hewlett Packard Enterprise, running a global digital transformation team. I've done a lot of consulting with small businesses as well, a lot of innovation work with small and large companies and that's pretty much me.
Thank you, Oliver. And Jill?
Good evening, Phil McLouis. I've been here about nine years, I'm currently the Executive Director for Naturally North Bay. It's a Chamber of Commerce that represents large food manufacturers that have originated in Sonoma County. Prior to that, I was the Executive Director for Angel Island Conservancy down in the Bay. I've also worked as the Chamber of Commerce Executive Director for Sebastopol. Also, I've worked in medical device for a number of years and sales and project management and co-owner of a small business here in town, Chuck, I can check up here with my best friend. I was on the board for the SDA up until earlier this year when I was a change turn. So I've just been extremely involved with businesses since I moved here. I go in, I served on the board for the Sebastopol Community Cultural Center for five years and also negotiated contracts for the parent association with Grand and State Schools.
Perfectly timed. Dennis?
Hi, my name is Dennis Coulters. I've lived here for over 40 years. I've served 34 years in the police department with a specialty in investigation and forensics. I've also worked patrol, walked downtown just about every day I work. I was educated at San Francisco State University. I've served for four years on the Chamber of Commerce back in the eighties. I also served on the Sonoma County Stids Board for about five years. And those are basically my qualifications. I really know this community and I love this community and I hope to serve it, serve it well.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, I'll ask the first question. We're going to go in the same order for the first question, then we'll rotate off there and you'll have 90 seconds. I'm going to hold this up, I don't know if everybody can see it, but it's pretty visible. And if you, when it's your turn to answer, if you read the question repeatedly, happy to do so. So Sandra, you will be first and the question number one is, Sebastopol currently has an annual budget of about $10 million and that seems to be very low for a town with our ambitions for being both business savvy, altruistic with regards to the unhoused and need for mental support services and the need for smart, modern police and fire services. What are your plans to increase our available budget dollars and what do you see as our local businesses' role in participating?
Yeah, I think your 2022, the budget was 12 million and the revenue was 11 million. So Sebastopol is definitely short and we need to find a way to close that gap. And I think a thriving business community is going to be really helpful to Sebastopol's And I believe that there is a revenue study coming out soon that the city council has authorized and I think that can help in terms of finding ways to increase revenue. I think it's a big problem for Sebastopol if you compare other cities' revenue to Sebastopol. We've got to find a way to close that gap and.
Stephen, same question.
Yes, one of my priorities that has been stated from the very beginning is to develop better and more efficient working relationships with our federal, state, county, and cities. Having served as a former library commissioner appointed by Sebastopol for two years, I did learn firsthand that partnerships are a way to share information, best practices, and they are a way to be able to tap into the talented grant writers that are available. As a result, Sebastopol, through our current city council, has written one of those grants and as a result, we're getting solar on our library, which our library needs a few other things besides that, but it's still good news in the fact that the grant writer was secured, money came down. So I'm saying that with increased partnerships, expertise, skill, and knowledge can be passed down through even any one of us that are interested in doing it and that is a role for small businesses to do as well, which is to get involved. If you have grant writing experience, draw down the benefit dollars, they are there contrary to what my teacher, they are available, there is money going to stay as well. So partnerships is key in order to help our small businesses so that we can all get the revenue up because as I mentioned, we definitely do need. It's a lot of priorities, but we need that revenue up, so at least we'll be able to have it.
Stephen, Oliver?
I agree with Stephen. I think with the opportunity for grants is very important for the small businesses. We're heading into a really serious recession. Everyone is versed in it now. We have a ton of empty storefronts all down the high streets in America or the city parks as we can't survive just the profit taxes, so it's imperative that we actually build that up. I mean, we are somewhat two cities. We've got the Barlow, which is actually absolutely harming, which is a private piece of land in the city. And then we have Main Street, which is pretty hit like right now and could be example tonight. So we've got to figure out a way of leveraging all of the, the really good marketing that the Barlow does to get people to come into Sebastopol and to go to the downtown, the restaurants. The other huge problem we've got really is half trans because what I really found walking around the city is just parrot incredibly noisy and it's the, the two major highways are 12 and 116, which is, you know, a huge impact on people's lives. I'm also on tourist, so I would really like to see some sort of shuffle bus service, just thinking outside the box so people can park on the city, let them get some kind of shuffle and enjoy a day in the city and then, or an hour in the city, whatever, and then go back to their car on the bus and carry on with their lives.
It's Oliver. Jill?
Absolutely. I mean, everything they said about the budget is true. We do need to bring up our, our tax base. It's disheartening to see what we're seeing on Main Street. I know a lot of cities are experiencing that right now. One of the things I, with the Chamber of Commerce, working with them, often we work with the Economic Development Board, so I've spent a lot of time looking at their projections over the next year. And we are close to a recession, we're not quite there yet, but we definitely need to figure out how to develop better partnerships as Oliver mentioned with the Barlow. When I started with the Chamber of Commerce in 2017, that was one of the top things that people said to me was, you know, why do we have this division between these two areas in this small city? And honestly, at that time, I didn't, you know, I was new. And then I spent time talking with everyone and everyone has the same goal, all the small businesses want to thrive, they want to survive and to have those divisions in the city. That's one of the things that I think that we, we need to work on and bring people together, especially during this time where we have all these financial difficulties that are occurring. And how do we leverage all of that? How do we leverage the best part of all of us? Because, I mean, that is what we all want to do, we want to thrive. I have a small chocolate shop, you know, there are days where, you know, what are we going to, you know, how are we going to, are we going to make it? So those are some of the things working with the Economic Development Board, I think the grants are a great idea and I think that's my point. I'm sorry.
No problem. Dennis?
I agree with all of you above. Additionally, one of the, the great starts for this process is right here with the Downtown Business Association. Walking like I did and talking to shop owners, it was a focus on themselves and it must be a cohesive group years ago, recently. And I think by, by joining together, it can be developed. And additionally, the grants are important. I think it might be worth the city's time. Think about hiring seven, I was a full-time grant writer. When I was at the police department, I wrote several grants, one of them paid us over a million bucks to, to redo our 9011 system and the money was just sitting there. So I think that all the above are important, that it takes a community to make it a community and it takes something like this, people interested in doing something as a group. I know that there's talk about expanding the DVA, I disagree with that. Barlow, for 80 years, was one business, now probably 30. And they contribute part of this, I think, I think this community needs to grow and get the business going.
Thanks, Dennis. All right. Very good. That's great. Question number two, Sebastopol has a shockingly high number of vacant business fronts at this time, as you all have alluded to. One suggestion that has come up in our organization's discussions is a carrot and stick approach that would provide assistance to landlords to find tenants and implement fines for those that are choosing to leave their spaces unoccupied as a tax write-off. How will you address the issue of vacant spaces in our city and what do you think the city council can do to make sure that empty storefronts do not remain so for the long term? Stephen, we'll start with you.
Yes, it is an interesting question. I listened to it last month and I do remember the discussion about the carrot and stick with landlords, providing incentives to them so that they can actually get some money in the space so that our Main Street is not looking like there's a lot of stores that are shut down. I think coming out of the economic crisis, which was the pandemic, it still is the pandemic. I'm not entirely sure, I mean, I certainly wouldn't want to be educated on that concept, but I do think that there are other ways to do it because each of those businesses had voluntarily thrown a towel, that was their lifeblood. So I think that as far as, I'm sorry, as far as what the city council can do is actually do a survey of each and every one of the businesses and prepare a report for why exactly they, they loved their business and decided to close and what they personally think could have helped them from the city is I think hearing from the people that were directly affected whose livelihood was short cut, I think would be a good way. As I said before, I have 28 seconds, tapping into the vitality of our U at our local high school. A lot of them want a mentorship program. Mentorship was discussed in this forum a month ago about bringing in the U to do extra shifts with businesses that could then tap into their talents as far as social media. A lot of them are studying business, they could be able to win across the board for businesses and it could be a way to get our U more involved in our community.
Thank you, Oliver. Now Stephen, Oliver, you're next.
You, go, okay. So yeah, a couple of things, the internet basically is killing, absolutely crucifying retail. We have the Jeff Bezos and Amazon and so on delivering everything into our houses. Then we had the pandemic, it's a nightmare in small businesses off the ground in California and in Sonoma County. So you've got those three things against those local businesses and a fourth dimension is that landlords don't really care for storefronts that are rented or not because they're getting a big tax write-off because nobody has storefronts. So we had to hit the landlords pretty hard with a baseball bat with incentives and say, you know, if store businesses bother doing in San Francisco places, if you don't have a store rented after six months, we're going to have to put some penalties on you. No ways of doing that. And really providing incentives, as Stephen suggested, with young, you know, young kids' businesses and so on, maybe have pop-up shops in stores because the really important thing is we've got to get people making, coming to Sebastopol as a destination to see what's unique in the stores here. You don't come here to go to Starbucks, you don't drive on 101 for an hour and a half to come to Starbucks, you want to come to a unique store like Sandy's, you know, things that Sandy was making, New Age stuff, whatever, it has to be a destination.
Sir? Now Jill? I can't. Sebastopol has a shockingly high number of vacant business fronts at this time. One suggestion that has come up in our organization's discussions is a carrot and stick approach that would provide assistance to the landlords to find tenants and implement fines to those that are choosing to leave their spaces unoccupied as a tax write-off. How will you address the issue and what do you think the city council can do to make sure that empty storefronts do not remain so for the long term?
I think the first thing is we need to start having those conversations with the landlords, actually just talking to them, figuring out why are they leaving an empty? Is it because it is a tax write-off or, you know, what is the obstacle? I can tell you, as a business owner, I've been trying to contact one empty space with the big sign on the front for months and they don't return my phone call. So it makes you wonder why, like, I mean, it's been empty forever and I'm, you know, so, so those are the kind of questions that I have and I think that we need to have those conversations to figure out why. And then once we do, if it is just that they're leaving them open and example for tax write-offs, I do believe that we need to figure out what type of incentives we can put forth to incentivize them to actually rent those spaces. Because what I have discovered in talking to a lot of different people, real estate agents, actually, they said that there are a lot of people who own the buildings downtown that actually don't even live here. I know one of the buildings is owned by a gentleman in San Francisco who hopes to redo it in a few years, he said. So they don't really have that skin in the game, they're not here every day looking at these empty spaces and, you know, so, I mean, those are the conversations, we need to figure out what's going on with that. I think that's pretty much.
Thanks, Jill. Dennis?
So how do we compete with Amazon? People, people use Amazon because it's convenient, it's quick, and you get what you want at a fair price. They don't get, it's people. And that's, to me, is part of the personality of the downtown, is having shops that take care of you, that personality. So you have, you have a, a relationship with them and when I want something, I'm going to go back. There was a place here years ago called Mostly Kitchen and it wasn't a bargain store, it was a kitchen store. Holly and, her husband Kurt ran the store. I would go nowhere else because when I walked in there, I was taking care of it at a fair price. We have to develop that personality downtown. When it comes to the shuttered businesses, shuttered businesses don't make any money for the landlord and I don't think it's totally a tax write-off, I don't think it's going to do it. But why not assist as a council, talk with the business owner or the building owner and assist with graduations, assist them. So that when you, to incentivize you, lease my building, I'm going to give you a free loan lease for the first six months to the year, keep talking to you, see how things are going and then eventually bring it up to where it needs to be. And I think, I know that looked important there years, years ago. Advertising, we have to do advertising, we have to turn downtown into a place people want to come to from out of town. And that's advertising as well as events, doing things that draw people in, not just to sell product, but to have fun. And for years, I talked about turning the downtown into Bedford Falls. Did I say, what did I say? Oh, Bedford Falls. Getting together on, decorating downtown. Thank you.
Waste of three seconds though. Sandra?
Yeah, I think the, the concept of either giving incentives or finding landlords who are not moving, renting out their properties is a good idea. And I think possibly council could direct staff to have those discussions with landlords. It could be like a study to find out what's going on. I recently canceled my Prime Amazon Prime membership because I thought that was the right thing to do and feel good about that. I think supporting the downtown with advertising, like Dennis said, is a good idea, having more events downtown. Like, one of my concerns is that CBS owns the building at the Redwood Market Place and that half of that place is empty, that's a really big concern. So. They'll probably ask about this, but I think it's really important to find a way to bridge the downtown with the Barlow, a safe way to bridge it and to bring more beauty to the downtown and more events to the downtown, I think, as well. And I, I witnessed, I, I watched at, at the council meeting a long time ago when they were talking about the Barlow and what to do with it. I'm really pleased with how it turned out and think it turned out really good. So, but it would be nice to have a bridge between the two sections and maybe bring back a pajama, if anybody remembers the pajamas.
All right, we're on to question number three. The Sebastopol Downtown Business District has been out of date for many years. We've already alluded to the fact that the Barlow used to be one business and is now about 30. What is your view of expanding the district to include all businesses within the city limits? Oliver, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I look into legality, that's why I'm standing here. This is funded by councils and we're all sitting here, you know, three of us will be councillors, so I'm not quite clear how the expansion thing would work, I'm not quite clear how the funding model would work. So I don't really have an answer to that question. I mean, it seems like a reasonably good idea. Having said that, my feeling is the city of Sebastopol is a very manageable little place, a shant-sized place with dismal budget, as Sandy says, we only got about $10 billion a year for everything. So to me, the number one priority is to get the, you know, budget money, the sales tax coming in first locally and then expand that from that. Because frankly, we don't have a particularly great track record here from what I've seen of successfully nurturing and expanding businesses downtown. So if I was living in the Dega Bay for example, I wouldn't be sort of particularly excited about the fact that this organization was growing. I haven't seen all that much evidence, frankly, of anything much happening here. So that's my position, very willing to change it. I don't really know nothing about the legality, as I say, of changing what this is, which is literally the downtown association.
Jill?
I think it's worth exploring, the idea. I think there are a lot of different questions that we'll have to work out and from what I understand of it, we really need to have the buy-in from all the businesses because they will be having an assessment and that means more cost for them and we're talking about how hard it is for businesses right now. So the idea of, you know, having more fees for having a business here, it's a little bit of a touchy subject and I, you know, I think that we would have to figure out what, what value we could bring, what is the ROI of that, you know, and as far as the SDA, I think having been on the board and involved for a number of years, I think we would have to look at the structure and how that money would be managed and what, you know, what would be the PPIs and, I mean, there's just a number of things that would need to be looked at in order to actually do that, but I think it's, it's worthy of exploring and figuring out what consequences.
Thanks, Jill. Dennis?
I, I do think that the Downtown Business Association needs to grow a bit. I believe in that, especially to take into consideration the Barlow. There should be a way to communicate between two areas as far as the traffic goes. I think downtown might need a little bit of a facelift. Certainly sidewalks need to be cleaned and I notice that every day when I walk. So it's going to take some creativity. It's, imagination, creativity are two of the most powerful things in the world and I know it can happen. I think talking with the landlords, trying to get these places filled and the expansion of the Downtown Business Association could also help provide funding for advertising and events.
Dennis? Sandra?
Could you read the question?
Sure. The Sebastopol Downtown Business District has been out of date for many years. What is your view of expanding the district to include all businesses within the city limits?
Well, the first thing that I would recommend is to do a survey of all the businesses to see if they were even interested, letting them know what the benefits would be of being part of that district. And. Sorry, was there? Yes, this came before the council recently and part of that, part of the, part of the write-up was that, that you would have to hire a consultant in order to figure this out and I have a problem with that because that seems like a waste of resources. I think that you all, you are the experts, the business owners are the experts, you're the stakeholders. The business owners are the experts, you're the stakeholders. Get together and do a survey and talk to each other. I don't know, I mean, I think sometimes it's important to hire a consultant, but maybe, maybe not all the time, maybe not this time. So.
Thank you. Stephen?
Yeah, I, I guess my, my major thought is why hasn't this happened already? And I still don't really get the real between downtown and the Barlow and the Chamber. And it just seems like everyone is still really silent. And it just, it just seems like the conversation needs to happen, which is like, what happened in the past that really upset you so much? That the Downtown Business Association is not on board with Chamber Congress and at your event, what is that? I mean, I sat on the Chamber board for two years and still don't have the answer. So I think, you know, like, a meeting, a, a real city sponsor meeting. And I know it can happen because we had one for the nonprofit segment. We all got together to support multiple service agencies. And it's like, aren't you doing double time? You know, how better can we work to serve our most marginalized? So I think that would definitely help. And then yes, as been indicated before, if you're gonna increase somebody's assessment, you definitely need to understand how that's gonna impact them. Because overall, we want to do good and not make their lives miserable. So I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Thank you. I guess the benefit of being the moderator is I get to comment once in a while. Uh, keep in mind that it's not just the Barlow that is not included in the district. Nothing on the north side of town is included, nothing on the south side of town is included. So there's a lot of businesses out there. Uh, okay, we're moving on to question number four. Locals have commented repeatedly and for years that they often choose not to shop downtown due to the lack of available parking. What can the city do to improve this situation? And what will you do as a council member to ensure that locals have easier access to our local businesses? Jill, we'll start with you.
Oh, I thank you so much. Um, I think there's a lot of different options. I mean, first of all, I think that a lot of people don't even realize where some parking lots are at. I can tell you from being at the Chamber, many people don't realize parking lot behind there is actually a parking, a public parking space for people. So I try to remind people that because anytime I come downtown, that's where I go and I always find a parking spot. The other thing is, is we have the twenty-four bus that runs, that drives around consistently. I don't believe that it's utilized a lot right now with COVID. I think that that kind of diminished and my, my neighbor uses it frequently to go to the grocery store. Um, I think that, you know, if we became more aggressive with that and as we see tourism come back and that, that's gonna take up more parking. I think for the locals, if we had a space where they actually could park or, you know, discover some kind of area where people could park and actually take the twenty-four into town and maybe figure out how to make that more convenient. Um, I also like the idea of the bikes, you know, electric bikes. We, we have a couple that we utilize and we ride our bikes to Whole Foods and everywhere else just to avoid certain times of day when it is really busy on the streets. Um, you know, that's also another thing that we can look at. But I've talked to so many different planners and like, we always hear there's no parking here, but there really is parking. It's just a matter of figuring out, you know, some people don't wanna walk too far. So it's just, it's, it's just having that discussion.
Thanks, Jill. Dennis?
I wanna circle back around to the use of a consultant. I agree that I, I don't think that's money twice spent most of the time. We have all the information we need sitting in this room to make a decision. It just takes input from business owners and individuals and also creativity and ideas. For as rapid goes, it's a no-win situation. I just have to let you know the trivia, nineteen eighty-three, who it was, I was the one who changed it from two ways to one. On a Saturday morning at eight o'clock, which you make my claim to fame. Not that I was happy, I could have done, could have done the bypass, they were talking about it. But business owners downtown said, we'll go out of business. What I know about that, if a business is doing well, healthy, parking's not a problem and, and location isn't a problem. Mostly Kitchen again was the worst parking in town, no question about it. Land office business because they knew how to, how to do it. But I think working as an association you are, it's gonna be worth its weight in gold. Shuttle, increasing the shuttle, you betcha. It's twenty-four, does it, it stops about seven or eight places in town. Increase the hours, it's not available on Sunday, increase the hours and increase the stops. And then if you can make a rattle loop in one hour, it means you're not less than an hour away from your car. Just sit there and just pop. And then bikes, that's a great idea. Look at Davis, Davis is the, the champion of bicycles downtown and bicycles for merchants. I think that's a great, great, great idea and I'd love to see that develop.
And Sandra?
Can you read the question?
Sure. Locals have commented repeatedly and for years that they often choose not to shop downtown due to the lack of available parking. What can the city do to improve this situation? And what will you do as a council member to ensure that locals have easier access to our local businesses?
Um, I consider myself a local. I've lived here for thirty, forty years. And I, I, I mean, just to be honest, I don't have a problem parking downtown. And I think that's because I know we're all parking lots. So the question kind of surprises me because it doesn't fit for me. But I understand that parking is a big complaint for, for people. So I think possibly it might be helpful to make it more obvious where the parking is. And maybe if you're a store and you're having complaints about parking, make it obvious to your customers where they can park, where are the best parking spaces? And I like the idea of increasing the shuttle hours. There's a new bar in town, I think it's called The Pink. And my neighbors were talking about it, thought it's a fun place to go. But if you had a, a shuttle that was running late at night, I think that would be helpful too.
Thanks. Stephen?
Yeah, local parking, that does seem to be a face on a lot of people's minds. Um, we are so stuck, obviously, with the two highways going through and with the bike lanes. They are there and I encourage bikes as much as the next person. Um, so the thought is where can you build more? Well, there has been discussion with the city own land, that the city owns, where the library is now, the senior center. Um, one of our council members who's stepping off, actually two council members who are stepping off, actually did come and looked at that square, putting in that square. Um, there with the library, the senior center and also with the county offices. And said that you could actually excavate the dirt that's underneath that property that's on the outside of the bookstore across the alley. And just decide that, you know, you can have more parking there if parking is really needed. But I do agree with Sandra too. I do think that there is plenty of parking and I think it's just a matter of having more signs or putting up like, businesses like Sandra mentioned, where are you going to actually park? And I see a lot of this struggle. And so I'm happy to be educated again about why it is that we wanna park. CBS, I mean, how many times have we heard about CBS? And it's barren and it's not that far away, at least from my perspective. I mean, with ADA accommodations, yes, we have to make sure that elderly and those can, you know, can make it through, right? But again, I think that you have more discussion, create more or make more options where they are.
Thank you, Stephen. Oliver?
Uh, signage, need signage. Uh, there's no signs if you're driving in from San Francisco or wherever or coming back from Oregon or something, you don't know where to park. This is not sort of clear where the car park is. Stephen said CBS car parkway near its DC used to be is barren. There's nothing on Google Maps. If you were saying, how do I get to Sebastopol to go into the Barlow or whatever, where can I park? We need to, you know, people on Google Maps say, here are all the car parks. So if you're going to this restaurant, this is the nearest car park. None of that stuff exists. Some bizarre reason, I was looking at an old Lonely Planet, you know, holiday guide from pre-internet. Sebastopol was even, I don't know why, nobody seems to be, you know, there's all this stuff about Sinovic, now it didn't exist. Um, I'm a big fan of the shuttle bus, we've beaten this one to death. But all the, all of the, all the people in Burbank Housing and FERC love that bus. But it starts at eight in the morning and finishes at the six in the weekend on Saturdays. Does it run on Sundays, as Dennis said? That thing should be running maybe twenty minutes with a bike rack on front. People should feel even parked by where CBS used to be. Hop on the bus and go to the Pop Monk or the Barlow or whatever and hop on the bus and get back to the car and drive wherever they're going next. So to me, that's the solution.
Thanks, Oliver. All right, we're on to question number five. Shoplifting and petty crime have seen a sharp increase in recent times, especially on the north side of town since the RV lot was established. We saw the same thing when the RVs were down on Morris Street. This epidemic is costing our local businesses tens of thousands of dollars monthly. What is your plan to address this situation so that our local businesses don't bear the cost of our town's social policies? Dennis will start with you.
You're in my wheelhouse. Just yesterday, spoke with Sergeant Frisky of the Police Department about footbeats downtown. I used to do a footbeat every day. And it does have, it has not only prevented it, that the officer gets educated who's downtown and what they're doing. And he said, he said conversations. Uh, he says that they're still directing to do one a day downtown. But I used to walk everywhere in town, hospitals, stores, Safeway, Lucky, all around. And I sit next to the check stand, just standing in front of people as they went by. San Francisco Police had, uh, uh, smashing grabs in Union Square, expensive jewelry. And Chief Scott said, I don't wanna politicize this, but the chief said, more cops on the street, that's what to do. And the next night, two nights later on the news, there are two cops sitting in a Ford Explorer at Fury and Stockton Street. What good is that doing? Get out, walk through the stores, that officer's gonna see a guy or maybe a clerk will say, you know, he comes in every day, which man doesn't bite anything. I'm gonna go make a friend, I'm gonna learn who he is and go talk to him. And he'll know I'm there. And that's preventative medicine. And I think it's extremely important to get back to that when the officer is conversing with the public, conversing with the merchants. And I'm gonna be meeting with the chief, I had an appointment, they have to cancel it. Um, and I'll be looking at that for your interest. Thanks.
Maybe Dennis, Sandra?
No, I'm sorry, could you say?
Shoplifting and petty crime have seen a sharp increase in recent times, especially on the north side of town since the RV lot was established. We saw the same thing when RVs were down on Morris Street. This epidemic is costing our local businesses tens of thousands of dollars monthly. What is your plan to address this situation so that our local businesses don't bear the cost of our town's social policies?
Yeah, this is a very painful, very complicated, difficult issue. And I did speak with the police chief, interim police chief Ron Nelson. And he said that since the Morris Street was cleaned up and that RV parking law was enacted, that the crime had actually decreased and that they were still having some problems at some. I've parked and it really would be fun. But, um, kind of a bad joke would be, well, there's nothing to steal from the, the CB and the Redwood Marketplace because there's no stores in there. But that joke, anyway. Dennis is really the police expert and I am not. But I would be happy to meet with any store owner, any business owner, anytime to discuss any of the issues that are, that they're facing, so.
Personal side, you would get a very different answer if you go talk to Doug and Dan at the Harvard. Uh, Stephen?
Yes. To be honest, yes, I would definitely like to look at the numbers because this is the first time that I've heard that. Elderberry Commons, it's a side people that have the same concerns where it's like gun shelter, they're gonna come in, crime's gonna come out. My understanding, last I checked there, crime had not, there was like no calls, crime related. So even assuming that the data is correct, then restorative justice needs to definitely take place. I definitely have said it before, law enforcement, they do a really good job, but they don't prevent crime. What does prevent crime? Affordable housing, jobs and connections to social services. So if we're going to employ like enforcement to come out and make the arrests and my way, especially if they're youth, employ restorative justice practices to make sure that businesses get back either their exact dollar amount or by way of work, that they need to be made right. Because if a youth, even a new age adult, you can't, you cannot buy like privacy like that by just simply going into store stealing. So that would be my answer.
Thanks, Stephen. Oliver?
Uh, well, the California still nine hundred dollars and no, uh, nothing's gonna happen. Things have been pretty catastrophic right across the state. Uh, locally, I think what users, that's all, are getting absolutely hammered all the time at the moment. Uh, being judgmental that it is. Um, there, I totally agree with what Dennis said. You, you know, if there's somebody in a uniform, if it's not actual cop, that is some kind of deterrent. Uh, right now, it's open season and unfortunately with the, um, SaaS encounter, incidentally, there's a, uh, planning meeting tonight about the SaaS, what do you call it, RV parking thing, whatever it's called, uh, tonight about extending it for another two years. It wasn't very well politicized by the council, but that's actually going on right now on Zoom. It's a really difficult problem. Uh, and unfortunately, you tend to get the, you know, if, if word gets around on social media amongst basically criminals, that it's easy pickings in the place, then more and more of them show up, which is what we've seen with the smashing grab rates in San Francisco and Los Angeles and London for that matter as well. Uh, if nothing happens, more and more people show up. So there has to be some kind of signaling to people. A lot of huge town community policing that's, as Dennis says, I'm not saying it's so obnoxious, you know, law enforcement, but you vote to share persons. Other ones, special one, where somebody there.
Thank you, Oliver. And Jill?
I can speak from experience, having a shop and communicating with a lot of the merchants. We actually have a private, you know, Instagram messaging where on any time or any kind of stuff occurs, we, you know, we, we communicate amongst each other. Sometimes they send pictures and I can tell you that over the last year or two, those messages have increased. There's smashing grab, taking a register out of one of the businesses downtown. Um, it's, it is, it is an issue. And I can speak to my businesses a hundred feet from Elderberry Commons. I don't wanna say necessarily that there's a lot of theft, but there is a lot, there are a lot of disturbances a month ago. We had to focus, but actually not from Elderberry Commons, but from the, the trail that came in to the, to the building. The police had, um, asked them to leave the trail and they were cugging quite a reckless and they called the police. And actually they said they couldn't come. And we were trying to figure out how to get people out of the building because some people were frightened. So there are just a number of like little issues and like that, that's, that's going on. I think that what Dennis mentioned as far as, you know, the community policing. And I don't wanna say that we wanna police everywhere, you know, that's, I just think that in talking with the merchants and the general consensus is it'd be nice to have a little bit more of a presence of someone walking around. And we also have a system set up for some of us. If we have employees in the shops and they're having an issue or they're frightened about someone that's in their shop, they will actually send a message and then we actually send, someone will send another employee over to that shop system, be there and sort of get on.
Jill? Thanks. All right, that is our five formal questions. Let me see what we had here. This is where my ad lib, you should all be terrible. How much time do we have?
It's eight o'clock.
Yeah, when?
I have fifteen, twenty minutes, I think.
Okay. If, if we're all of us, where would you?
You can have a whole half hour if you want, that's fine.
Okay, so, um, the first question has to do with firefighters and. Fire department and all that, we'll get to that in a minute if we get through the business ones, because this is kind of business focused. Uh, they do address public service stuff on that, uh, League of Women Voters form. And you'll get a lot of information on public service, EMF, smart meters, that kind of stuff.
They, they didn't ask about the tire department.
All right. Um, hold that, hold that thought for a second. I'm finding ways to communicate with the residents of Sebastopol, information was, that's a good question. Um, what are your thoughts? Let's, let's do sixty seconds for these. Uh, what are your guys' thoughts on better ways to communicate with the residents of Sebastopol in regards to information on the city council and what's going on in our town? Stephen, go ahead.
Better ways to communicate, yes. I do know and I have noticed that they, the city council has put out like, you can subscribe to a specific agenda item so that you can get reminders about when your specific issue of interest are coming up, which I think is great. What I also think would be great is they have suggested time periods. So the chair and the vice, the mayor and vice chair are encouraging us to think about having suggested time limits per agenda item. And if people need to go over, there are two neutral roles, we can ask for more time. What I've been hearing is the fact that people do not have separate hours of their lives to dedicate to say for council meetings when they really came in, which is one single issue. So that's my thought.
Thanks, Stephen. Sandra?
Yeah, I actually have been thinking about this in terms of if I get elected, I'm gonna stay in touch with people. And as a city organizer, one of the things that I structured, that I have created is the specialist. And there are three services you can create a specialist. And that way, anybody. And that way, anybody who wanted to be on that discussion list can then discuss the issues that is coming up at the next council meeting. So the city does send out a bulletin a week before the meeting. And so there couldn't be, I suppose there could be two council members on that, but really probably only best be one. Because I think it's the Brown Act, the name of it prohibits council people from talking to each other. But it doesn't prohibit a council member from engaging the community. And you, you know, I was thinking, would it be like a one-way communication? Or wouldn't it be better to have a discussion list where people could actually talk about it? That way you can really hear what people were thinking and feeling about whatever is on that agenda. And I agree with the time limits, I think that would be really helpful to have time limits so that you know when that issue is gonna be up.
Thank you, Sandra. Sorry, I thought you were done with that stuff.
That's great.
Yes?
Hey, good to have you, bud. I really think that uh having a really effective website, real effective way for the public to communicate with the specific council people or the whole council as a whole. It's really important to be a more robust website with better communication. I do agree also with the time limit on the council meetings, try to tighten that up. Because after three and a half, four hours, you start to lose your audience. And and I think be creative again and ways to tighten up the meeting a little bit. That's me against our council, please. But it just, I keep noticing in the meeting that sense to happen. Is that it?
Jill? I made it up, Jill. Uh how to find better ways to communicate to the residents of Sebastopol, information on what's going on in the city council and the town?
Okay, okay, so. Um I, I think what I was talking about, you know, having something online where there is maybe a little more interaction. We also have, do have to be careful, the Brown Act and, you know, and in ways that, you know, responses can occur. But at least giving the community some way to have more visibility to things that are agenda items and that type of thing. Um I think that that is important and. Not that every council member has all the time in the world, but sometimes I think that it would be really helpful if we had a quarterly town hall where people could actually talk and. And communicate, I mean, online is great and we've been doing that forever, but I think there's something to be said for actually sitting in this room and all of us having these conversations. And that, that two-way communication, I think that's huge. So, you know, whether it's quarterly or whatever it is, but having more of that, that connection with everybody and having discussions just like we are right now.
Jill, Oliver?
Uh well, enterprise collaboration is one of my areas of expertise, I'm too proud of it, I was doing it for years. I know all of that, if you were to communicate through high-dollar projects internationally online. So I feel it's gonna be twenty twenty-three next year, a lot of the stuff, I believe it's very archaic. Long sprawling uh council meetings, as people previously said. I'm coming from one topic. So a lot more online dialogue, I've heard a lot from people about, some people really want to get back to being a community center and giving. Councils a sing by from the, from the cheap seats, how people really enjoy the whole Zoom thing. Because they've got kids and elderly relatives and so on. So some kind of hybrid thing, and I totally agree with Jill, sort of quarterly table no matter what, which is sort of a. You know, sort of a, sort of a ball hands, but not all bare metal fist fight on anything you want for a couple of hours with a council.
Would like to reserve myself. Okay, I'm gonna combine a few questions here that kind of pertain to the Barlow because I can and that's near and dear to me. Um so the questions came up, are you excited about the new hotel opening between the Barlow and downtown? And tie that into how specifically would you envision bridging the Barlow with Main Street? Uh Oliver, let's start with you.
I think the Barlow is great. Um Barney from Barney just gave me a ton of money to put into the bank today, because he really likes what we're doing. Of course, there's not any for him, but I cannot understand, you know, why there's the Barlow and there's the city as, the rest of the city as I said at the beginning. I forgot the question.
Just how would you tie them together? How would you get?
That's the point, I mean, it's pretty much a no-brainer to me. I mean, it's weird, the Barlow is a system problem and then kind of city of Sebastopol sort of faltering in these parts. Um it'll really improve when the hotels, though, because I think it'll filter better there. Where the peace signs, I think a lot more can be done there, obviously, because it's really busy corner. To make it clear, the next year, we're gonna now walk through to the town square, eat ice cream from screaming memes, like preferably a working fountain or a stair. Um so that's my opinion.
Jill?
So.
Yeah, I'm not a planner, but I, but when I look at that from walking from, you know, the square to the Barlow, it does just feel disjointed. Um you know, the sidewalks kind of are wonky and they end and they begin and they're some are wider than others. You know, just having a full plan for that, I know that Blue, the group Blue, who's looking at designs, that might be part of what, you know, what they're assessing. So I think that we have some people that are already on that, but at the same time, again, I'm not a planner, but it's just trying to figure out, how do you make that visually look more connected? So that when people are walking around, they understand that they can come downtown or, you know, or have the other way to the Barlow. So I mean, you know, I'm sure there are a number of other things that experts could tell us, but just from my own perspective, that's what I think would work.
Dennis?
Yes, it has to be engineered. And if you think about it, from the Main Street here to the Barlow, it's less than a thousand feet, it's not that far. I think it just needs to be engineered so it looks inviting. And traffic is mitigated by crosswalks, it tends to work real well, the push button, traffic stops, so it's not that you can't get across the street. Needs to be a communication between the Barlow, the downtown business people, helping each other out as a group. Uh I think it can be done. Barlow's relatively new and hasn't actually been addressed yet, so I'm thinking these, and these downtown business association meetings and getting, coming up plans to do it. Once again, events, advertising, you know, the Barlow's been featured in Sunset Max, let's get downtown going, do the same thing in the back. About all I have to say.
Please, Dennis. Sandra?
Yeah, I think your question started out with how excited are you about the hotel coming in and that was the second part of it?
How specifically would you envision bridging the Barlow to downtown?
So my hope is that that hotel will bring in revenue for the city. Not only revenue, but increased business for all the businesses downtown in the Barlow. Um and, you know, if I had a magic wand, I'd create a walking bridge in between. I don't think that's gonna happen, because you need a really long ramp coming up. But um something artistic, something obvious, maybe, maybe it has to be a soft light, you know, a light there. But something, some way to bridge those, the downtown of the Barlow is really important to them.
Thanks. Stephen?
Yes, the hotel, I, I think it's great, I've got, I'm privy to the actual design features. I'm really hoping that whatever it is and however it functions, that it's sustainable and it's environmentally impactful. Because whatever we buy it in, we do have policies within our own city of being environmentally impactful. Um the bridging, I'm hoping again, based upon this discussion, that the different groups can at least work together to make sure. That they can actually send this in both directions, because my perspective, it's not that far, it's just the fact that people don't really know. So I think the signs stating, if you're looking for this, then it's far. If you're looking for this, type that, you know, so, yeah. Maybe that wasn't a great answer.
You know, in some, in some cities, they'll have like shopping like sites and it'll tell you where you can find these places. So maybe if you had one of those downtown and one of those in the Barlow, that way people could help to identify where they're going.
Uh hold on, I'm gonna let you all add as many things as you want. Uh so I went through the rest of the questions and some of them are off topic of business discussions. But here's what we're gonna do, one of the questions, what is, what is your vision for Sebastopol? It's very generic, so what I'm gonna do is give you each ninety seconds to close. And it's wide open, anything you want to discuss, anything you want these folks to know about your campaign and what you stand for. And hopefully you can tie in a little bit about your vision for Sebastopol. And we will start with Sandra.
Uh well, to say, but I'd just like to thank the Sebastopol Downtown Association and thank Softness and Sanctuary for hosting us tonight. My top priorities, community vitality and engage, community engagement, environmental wellness. Support for thriving business community, maintaining our fire department and ensuring they are adequately funded. And to uphold Sebastopol's general policies to reduce CMS, protect public health and safety. And I will be a watchdog on all environmental issues. I will listen and work with residents and local experts to develop solutions to create a more vibrant community. Um so my vision is that we have been through a lot as a community in the last five years. We've been through a pandemic, we've been through devastating wildfires, we've been isolated. And this has been really challenging and inflation. So my vision is healing, uh community healing, wellness, helping me get there together. So thank you so much for.
Thanks, Sandra. Thank you.
Yes, I want to thank the organizers as well and for our hosts, thank you for having us here. Um my vision, basically, I'm really proud to be endorsed by Sebastopol tomorrow. And if you're not familiar about what that they've done, then I would encourage you to go to their websites and get involved. Has the charm of their downtown and now with the addition of the Barlow. A lot of the work that they've done is actually the reason why we have everything here, is that our unique style. And I really hope that we can maintain that, whatever we put here, I'm hoping that it can be environmentally conscious. Because again, our policies are set out, they area-wise, and other people look to California, to us, to be leaders in the area of climate change. And I hope that honestly, we can actually develop our diversity in our community, we have different voices come out. And that starts, I believe, at least with our youth. Again, we have them at our disposal during the day and I'll be that we can think creatively of bringing them in, doing an intergenerational movement. Because yes, a lot of us are in one end of the spectrum during the day, there are people on the other end of the spectrum. Maybe we could join together, work and get things done.
Thank you, Stephen. Oliver?
Uh I think my campaign is basically back to basics. Um this is a very unusual time, Sebastopol, because we've got three new councils coming in. Uh new police chief, new city clerk. City manager, yeah, new city attorney, uh new fire chief, a lot of things we need to do with the fire service in order to make sure that we're all safe for the future. So a big opportunity to change and improve everything and revive lives. Um so one of the core, you know, back to basics, one of the core goals is to get downtown commerce in the context of this group here, really moving again. Uh get more farm board revenue coming in and we can get things like what I was gonna say next, from the previous thing with the hotel. Lights between the hotel and the, and the town square, because if you leave the Barlow, it's like you're heading into a car park. So it was like, nothing there, you didn't even realize the downtown estate. So if you're here in the union, you know, and half cut, you don't actually know that there's an entrance there. So just basic things like that. And then, you know, with the money we make as we increase our budget, we can start to think about all the other things that Sebastopol spends for, as Stephen was just talking about. So that's kind of my vision. Thanks.
Jill?
Oh, my vision, well, we moved here because we love it here. You know, how when you go to a place and you discover it's like home for you. And that's where we, that's why we're here, I moved here, so are some people up here in a friendly community where it's accepting of everyone. Um so that's the big thing, but as far as businesses and just thinking about downtown, I agree with what Oliver is saying. I mean, we do have to get back to the basics of some things. But I also envision a place where, you know, people can come downtown and have lunch in the square and feel comfortable. And it's tidier than what it is right now, I had lunch a few weeks ago and had people screaming and had to leave. And I just envision having, you know, just a lovely street where everything is tidy and some benches and some plants hanging. And where people watch a stroll downtown and stroll over to the Barlow and go to all of those places. Um and I also, I was talking to a business owner the other day and I asked her, what do you want? What do you want to see or like, what do you want in a counselor? And obviously, this is a little brash, but she said, I just want someone who's gonna get shit done. I mean, that's a little brash, but that's what she said to me, so, you know, and I get that. And I've got a lot of capacity for that, but also, I just, I've been talking with, today I was talking with the Sonoma County Tourism and also the EDB. And I get some information that I want to share with some of the business owners about the additions, that they're getting ready to launch, that they want to make shelves. But um so that's what the business owners are there, so maybe after that, we can share that.
Thanks, Jill, and I'll buy that one for sticker. Uh Dennis?
There are a few things about Sebastopol that are unique. Our population is seventy-three hundred and some odd people now. We serve forty thousand, the West County comes into town, they do business here. They recreate here, they go to health clubs here. The busiest intersection in Sonoma County is Highway twelve, one sixteen, sometimes up to seventy thousand transactions a day. So we have the traffic, we have the people, we just have to create, once again, a downtown that will attract people. I love the lighting idea of connecting the Barlow with downtown Sebastopol. And and my vision for the future is to work with the fire department. It is to bolster the budget of this community and keep the community safe. And back to circle back to community-oriented policing, it is not a cop walking downtown with a baton. It isn't a guy violating anybody's rights, it's a guy paying attention and doing what's necessary to keep the area safe. That plaza is a huge problem and has been for years. And if you have a policeman walking deep, getting to know people, talking to people, they, there's a respect built up. And problems can be assuaged. Um I will say that we used to have a problem downtown with the kids from the school smoking in front of businesses. And the smoke would waft into the business and we'd get complaints. So I worked at it. I went downtown, I talked to all the kids and said, hey, this doesn't work if you're smoking here. You know, it's a sort of toxic substance, so why don't you move somewhere else? I won't bother you, if I get to continue to sit in place, I gotta do something. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh on behalf of the Downtown Business Association, I want to thank all of you for coming up for your participation tonight, let's give them a round of applause.